Eh, hanggang dito lang ako. Tapos na siya panahon eh. Sabi nga nag-
Nga tapos na siya.
Nag-ano siya eh?
Pag-ano siya, pag alis mo.
Nag-ano siya, tapos rin sabi nga ganun daw siya. Siya kumain, nagfasting daw siya.
Magre-syum niya.
Haha, nagfasting daw siya dahil sa- Siya na siya no? Kasi nagfasting siya, tayo kailangan na rin. Defer, defer. Okay. Tapos, ano na suspension. And then take over. Ika-check number. Para po una na sila para matapos. Uber kayo na. Kasi para first ano? First talk. Yung gusto ko yung magtindaw. Oh, parang matawa. Oh, meron ang ano, journal.
Ah, wala nga ako sa focus, wala akong natanggap na ano eh. Wala akong natanggap na text eh.
Kasi wala mo sila. So defer, defer. And then suspend. Ah, refer the reading of the- Ay, you have to write it.
You have to write it boss. And then you have to type it.
You have to type it.
The session is now called to order. Everybody is requested to rise for the singing of the national anthem. Bayang magiliw, peras ang silang anan. Alang ng puso sa dipdip mo'y buhay. Lupang hiniram, buyan ka ng magiting. Sa manlulupi, kita pasisinil. Sa lalat at bundok, sa simoy at sa lakit mong paghaw. May hilang ang tulad at awit sa paglayang nilabahan. Ang kissap ng wata at mo'y takumpay naratingin. Ang pituming na haraw niya kailan, mapay magidiling. Lupan ang haraw ng war, amit pa'ng setka. Ayayami sa dipdip. Aming likaya napak may mamahapin. At lamatay ng daril sayo. Please remain standing for a minute of silent prayer and meditation. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we defer the calling of the roll.
Any objection? The Chair hearing none, the motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, I move for the deferment of the approval of the journal of the previous session.
Any objection? The Chair hearing none, the motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Any objection?
Ah, wait, wait.
The Chair hearing none, this is, this session is suspended. Session resume.
Mister Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bills and resolutions for first reading to be referred to the appropriate committee.
Reference of Business, Bills on First Reading, House Bill 4534, Instituting Reforms in the Subdivision Condominium Buyers Protective Decree, Representative Yak Victor.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill numbers 4535 to 4538 and 4540, Converting Certain Roads in Cogendio Oros City into National Roads, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 4539, Providing for Early Voting, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Self-Raising Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 4541, Exempting from Estate Tax the Unpaid Violence of Just Compensation, Representative Maximo Rodriguez.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 4542, Regulating the Production, Importation, Sale, Provision, Use, Recovery, Collection, Recycling, Disposal of Plastic Bags, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill 4543, Establishing Resource Development and Crisis Assistance Centers, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill 4544, Granting Security of Tenure, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 4545, Providing for Free and Culture-Sensitive System of Registration, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous People.
House Bill 4546, Establishing Quality Standards for Mineral, Carbonated and Other Bottled Waters, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 4547, Investment Incentives Code of the Philippines, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 4548, Providing for Magna Carta for Probation and Parole Workers, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 4549, Strengthening the Witness Protection Security and Benefit Program, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 4550, Establishing National Preventive Mechanism Against Torture, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Human Rights.
House Bill 4551, Instituting National Land Use and Management Policy, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Special Committee on Land Use.
House Bill 4552, Upholding the Rights and Promoting Rights, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 4553, Establishing the Civil Service Code of the Philippines, Representative Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 4554, Promoting Cultural Sensitivity, Representative Simopo.
To the Committee on Muslim Affairs.
House Bill 4555, Granting a Franchise and Allow the Electing Cooperative, Representative Simopo.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchise.
House Bill 4556, Regulating the Same Distribution and Use of Firecrackers, Representative Gachalian.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 4557, Establishing the Visayas and Midnight Hospital Facilities, Representative Gachalian.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 4558, Establishing the Visayas and Midnight Hospital Facilities of the Long Centers, Representative Gachalian.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 4559, Establishing the Visayas and Midnight Hospital Facilities of the Philippine Heart Centers, Representative Gachalian.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 4560, Amending Presidential Deficit 96, Representative Gachalian.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 4561, Instituting a National Traffic Code, Representative Butokabe.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 4562, Strengthening Rank-and-file Employees Benefits from Service Charges, Representative Blaugan.
To the Committee on Labor Unemployment.
House Bill 4563, Requiring all micro, small and medium enterprises to provide consumers with standardized fees of prices, Representative Roman.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 4564, Amending Article 365, Article 14 of Act 3815, Representative Roman.
To the Committee on Revisional Laws.
House Bill 4565, Providing for Legal Framework and Mechanisms for the Creation, Operation, Administration of Transnational Higher Education in the Philippines, Representative Salo and Hofer.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 4566, Renaming MacArthur Highway, Manila North Road to General Gregor Del Pla Highway, Representative Albarado.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 4567, Granting Senior Citizens Additional Exemption and Determining Income Tax, Representative Del Rosario.
To the Committee on Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 4568, Amending Section 396B, 5, Chapter 4, Title 1, Book 3 of Republic Act 7160, Representative Baccensa.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 4569, Providing for the Creation of a Council for the Welfare of Older Persons, Representative Butokabe Garbinenko.
To the Committee on Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 4570, Terminating the Collection of Toll fees, Representative Dalok.
To the Committee on Special, Special Committee on North Lawson, Growth and Quadrangle.
House Bill 4571, Abolishing the Baguio-Bontoc Halsema Highway to Dalok.
To the Special Committee on North Lawson, Growth, Quadrangle.
House Bill 4572, Prescribing Computer Science as Part of the K2 program, Representative Garcia.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 4573, Providing for the Inclusion in the Critical of Secondary, Tertiary Education, the Life Works and Ideals, Representative Bilago.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
Communication, 2015 Annual Report of the Board of Investments.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
Committee Report, Committee Report Support Numbers 36 to 39 on House Bill numbers 4602, 1425, 2656 and 2708.
To the Committee on Roles. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize our minority leader, Danilo Suarez.
The Minority Leader, the distinguished gentleman from Quezon, Representative Danilo Suarez is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. It's my honor to nominate the minority members for the following congressional oversight committees. Automated Election System Congressman Harry Roque, Congresswoman Delpne Gunley, Congressman Eugene Michael De Vera. For Official Development Assistance Law, Congressman Harleen Abayon, Congressman Orestes Salon. Anti-Money Laundering Act, this representation, and Congressman Luis Jose Angel Campos. Comprehensive Dangerous Drug Act, Congressman Eugene Michael De Vera, Congressman Harry Roque. Bio-Pewels Act, Congressman Orestes Salon. Micro, Small, Medium Enterprise Development, Congressman Antonio Bravo, Congresswoman Anna Marie Villarazas Suarez. Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Act, Congressman Monsur Del Rosario, Congresswoman Arlen Arcillas. AFP Modernization Act, this representation, and Congressman Joselito Achenza Jr. Human Security Act, Congressman Richard Josebio, Congressman Anthony, Anthony Bravo. Overseas Absentee Voting Act, Congressman Aniceto Bertis, Congresswoman Abigail Pepeyol Pascual, and Congresswoman Delpne Gunley. Special Purpose Vehicle Act, Congressman Joselito Achenza, Congressman Alfredo Garbin Jr. Labor and Employment, Congressman Aniceto Bertis. Reproductive Health Act, Congresswoman Cecilia Leonila Chavez. Enhanced Basic Educational Program, Congresswoman Julieta Cortuna, Congresswoman Cecilia Leonila Chavez. National Health Insurance Act, Congresswoman Arlen Arcillas, Congresswoman Anna Marie Villarazas Suarez. And Philippine Competition Act, Congressman Alfredo Garbin. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair hearing none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we consider for approval on second reading. House Bill Number 64, as contained in Committee Report Number 30, could the Secretary General be directed to read the title of House Bill 64? So move, Mister Speaker, your honor.
Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill for approval on second reading.
House Bill Number 64, Annex Strengthening Compliance with Occupational Safety and Health Standards and Providing Penalties for Violations Thereoff.
Mister Speaker, your honor, to stand as sponsor of this measure, I move that we recognize the Honorable Chairman of the Committee on Labor and Employment, the gentleman from the Third District of Cagayan, the Honorable Randolph Ting. So move, Mister Speaker.
The distinguished gentleman from Cagayan Randolph Ting is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, thank you, Mister Majority Floor Leader. Ah, I'm asking the Honorable Speaker to consider the exploratory not to be the sponsorship speech, Mister Speaker.
The manifestation of this distinguished sponsor is noted.
Mister Speaker, your honor, as none of our colleagues have stood to interpolate the honorable sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate on House Bill Number 64. So move, Mister Speaker, your honor.
Any objection? The Chair hearing none, the motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, your honor, as there are no individual nor committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments on House Bill Number 64. So move, Mister Speaker, your honor.
There being none, the motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, your honor, I move for the approval on second reading of House Bill Number 64 contained in Committee Report Number 30. So move, Mister Speaker, your honor.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to call the roll of members. Those who are in favor of House Bill Number 64, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against House Bill Number 64, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 64 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, in accordance with the rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following House Resolutions to the appropriate committees. House Resolution 573 to the Committee on Transportation. House Resolution 574 to the Committee on Energy. House Resolution 575 to the Committee on Health. House Resolution 576 to the Committee on Health. House Resolution 578 to the Committee on Justice. And House Resolution 579 to the Committee on Youth and Sports Development. So move, Mister Speaker.
The Chair hearing none, the motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, we leave of the House, I move that we open the Privilege Hour.
Session suspended. Session resume.
Mister Speaker, I withdraw my previous motion. Mister Speaker, I withdraw my previous motion, and thereafter consequently I move that for the suspension of the session.
The most, the session is suspended. Session resume, Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, we leave of the House, I move that we open the Privilege Hour.
Any objection? The Chair hearing none, the motion is approved, and the Chair declares a Privilege Shower.
Mister Speaker, I now move that the gentle lady from the Partilis Act Teachers, the representative Franz Castro, be recognized to avail of the Privilege Hour.
The gentle lady from the Partilis Act Teacher is hereby recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mister Speaker, thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Mister Speaker, I rise today on a question of personal and collective privilege, as I ask each and everyone. Hanggang kailan po natin nahayaan ang pagtapak sa mga karapatang pantao ng mga bilanggong politikal. Allow me to begin with the words of a colleague in a teachers movement, Rene Boy Abiba's case. And I quote, isa akong social worker, lunes hanggang biyernes sa Bagaw, probinsya ng Cagayan, DSWD Field Office Number 2. Sabadot lingoy, ginugugol ko sa pag-aaral sa graduate school ng Cagayan State University. Dahil batid ko na kailangan ang paglahok ng sektor, guro sa panlipunang pagbabago. Tumutulong ako sa pagmumulat, pag-oorganisa at pagmumalisan ng mga pampublikong guro sa ilali ng Alliance of Concerned Teachers. Isang makabayan, militante at progressibong organisasyon ng mga guro para sa katuparan ng kanilang nasa na maging ahente ng kamulatan. Ang karanasan nila sa araw-araw ay karanasan din na mga pesante at manggagawa. Mga karanasang nagpapatibay sa kung anong klaseng lipunan mayron ang Pilipinas. Mapanupil, mapangapi at komersalisado ang sistema na edukasyon kanilang kinikilusan. Disyembre 28, dalawang libo't labing tatlo, araw na pagigkas ng lahat, araw na pag-arresto sa akin. Isa akong bilango ngayon, suot ang kamisetang dilaw. Ngayon sa probinsya ng Ifugao, dito sa piitang Ginawang Garison, kasamay tatlo pang detenidong politikal na miembro ng kilusang pesante, isinasa ilali sa nakapanlulumong kalagayan. Ito ba ang sukli sa pagsisilbi sa sambayanan? Ang kapalit sa ating kolektibong paghahanap ng tunay at batayang kabuluhan ng pagiging tao? O ganti sa paglalahad sa katotohanan nasa likod ng mga islogang? Daang matuwid, demokrasya, kalayaan at kawalan ng korapsyon ay eksklusibong kagandahan, karangyaan, kapangyarihan, gara at luho para sa iilan na pinaghaharian ng bansa. Ako si Rene Boy Abiba, kasalukuyang nakapiit sa BJMP Cordillera at Minestrib Region. Isa ako sa daan-daang detenidong politikal sa buong kapuluhan na pinagdudusahan ang matagal ang mga gawa-gawa kaso. Ginoong speaker, sir Rene Boy ay isang social worker ng DSWD. Organistador na mga guro at pesanteng komunidad at aktibista. Pero ayon sa militar, isa siya sa responsable sa isang ambush sa mga sundalo at isang rebelde. Amidst the ongoing peace negotiation between the government and the National Democratic Front of the Philippines, around 400 political prisoners are still suffering behind bars on the basis of malicious fabricated charges. This representation maintains that they have suffered long enough behind bars. In fact, they should not have suffered in the first place. They are only activists from marginalized sectors who in their struggle with the masses for economic, social, and political rights are branded as rebels by past administrations. The military and the police and the opplan bayanihan will demand their immediate release so that justice is realized, so that they can return to the communities they serve. Political prisoners from education sector, Sara Alvarez, Reya Pareha, Dominiciano Muyo, and Amelia Pond. Sir Rene Boy po ay isa lamang sa mga detenidong politikal mula sa sektor na aking kinabibilangan. Tiyak na hindi pinaligtas ng karasa ng opplan bayanihan, ang sektor na edukasyon. Dahil kabilang sa mga biktima nito ay mga guro at organisador na militanteng kilusang guro na ang tanging layunin ay lumaban kasama ang mga mayan para sa isang lipunan kinikilala ang kanilang karapatan at kagalingan. Itinuturing na kriminal ang kanilang politikal na paniniwala at aktibidad sa pamamagitan ng pagsasampa na mga gawa-gawa at malisyosong kaso. Dahil dito sa torture, kostodya ng pulis at militar at di makataong kalagayan sa piitan, marami sa kanila ay nagkasakit o lumalala ang mga dati ng sakit. Gaya ng tinura ni Rene Boy, ito po ba isusukli sa kanilang, ng kanilang pamahalaan kapalit ang paglilingkod sa kapwa Pilipino? One of them is Reya Pareha, a volunteer teacher for peasants in Quezon. Now in jail under false charges of illegal possession of firearms and explosives. She was participating in the adult literacy program of ACT when she was arrested in March 2010 in Mulanay. When the military arrested teacher Reya, they took 70,000, a laptop, fruits, toiletries, pencils, paper, and notebooks, all for the children and barangay in her care. And of course, her freedom. What the military gave her instead? Planted evidence, coined aliases, and to pin her in charges, a red tag. She is allegedly an NPA. She developed tuberculosis after physical and psychological torture and six years of difficult and unsanitary jail conditions. Lumad educators Dominiciano, Juning, Muya, and Amelia Pond are also ailing political prisoners. Ka Juning was a school, agriculture, and technology and livelihood education teacher in the Salugpungan Tatano Ikanugon Community Learning Center Incorporated in Talaingo, Davao del Norte. The military arrested him in October 2014. The military arrested him in October 2014 in Tagum City, presented the teacher as a top-ranking leader of the New People's Army, then collected a 4.8 million bounty. He now suffers from pneumonia and bronchitis in an isolated prison facility in Malay Balay, Bukidnon. He was reinfected with tuberculosis due to prison conditions. Teacher Ami was a volunteer teacher, researcher, and curriculum developer for the Lumad Schools when he was illegally arrested in August 2016 under a defective warrant in the name of one Adelfa Toledo, an alleged NPA official in Davao. The CIDG agents planted fake IDs at the very scene of her arrest when charged her with murder and frustrated murder. This illegal arrest occurred a few months before the first round of the Oslo Talks, while the government is supposedly preparing for the resumption of the peace talks. Now 64 years old, she is under hospital arrest at the Southern Philippines Medical Hospital after an operation on her lumbar spine. She also has chronic renal infection, osteoporosis, and hyperlipidemia. A former political prisoner, recently released in bail but still slapped with fabricated charges in Sara Alvarez, a teacher, political activist, and human rights defender in Negroes. Writing about her arrest in October 30, 2012 by the military in her hometown, Cadiz, she said, and I quote, "Around 30 fully armed men surrounded me and pointed their gun at me. Cases of human rights violations where we documented extrajudicial killings or enforced disappearances came to my mind. I thought, maybe this is the moment, this is the time, and it's me. All the police stations, I learned that I was arrested for the murder of a First Lieutenant in the Philippine Army. I did not get any other information, they just handed me the warrant. My name was written incorrectly, and also my address was wrong." And I quote, "Mr. Speaker, we deemed the immediate and unconditional release of teachers Rea, Jonning, and Ami, and the dismissal of the fabricated charges against them, teachers Sara, and the rest of the political prisoners this government has basically detained. Their health conditions proved the urgency of this release. This government should not wait for another detainee to die before fulfilling its commitment under Comprehensive Agreement on Respect for Human Rights and International Humanitarian Law. This is not a matter of charity, Mr. Speaker. This is a matter of life and death, and one of honest compliance to commitments already agreed to, and yet to be agreed to. Free them now in time for the coming International Human Rights Day. Do not let them spend another Christmas behind bars. Mr. Speaker, I would like to underscore the government's failure to release political prisoners since President Duterte dangled the possibility of the general amnesty in May. I reiterate the demand of ACT Teachers Partilis for the government to release around 400 political prisoners, including 130 who are ailing and elderly, some of whom are teachers. Hindi maaring gawing bargaining chip ng pangulo ang mga nakakulong na political prisoners para masunod ang kanyang adyenda sa negotiating table na magkaroon agad ng bilateral ceasefire habang wala pang mga substansyal na reformang social, ekonomiko na napagkasunduan. Ang pagpapalaya sa mga bilanggong politikal ay pagtupad sa mga pinirmahang kasunduan sa pagitan ng Gobyerno at ang National Democratic Front of the Philippines. The release of the political prisoners is a matter of justice and protection of human rights. It is also a compliance with the signed CARIL. Their detention has no place under an administration that brands itself as one of change. It shows that far from discounting the hinous Oplan Bayanihan, government still implement it as it were legal and democratic. It proves political repression still remains under the Duterte administration. Mula ng maipatupad ang Oplan Bayanihan sa ilalim ni Pangulong Akino, lumobo ang bilang na mga progresibo, aktibista, at mga revolucionaryong sinampahan ng gawa-gawang kasong kriminal. Sa layuning sila ay patahimikin at pigilin sa pagtindig para sa mga mahirap na mamamayan. Kinakailangan patunayan ng Pangulong Duterte ang kanyang sensibilidad sa peace talks sa pamamagitan ng pagtigil ng Oplan Bayanihan at ang binubunsag nitong red bating at belification. Mga walang batayang kriminal na pagpaparatang sa mga aktibista tagapagtaguyod na karapatang pantao at pagtukoy sa kanilang bilang mga target na mga vigilante para military at mismong Armed Forces of the Philippines. Aming ipinanawagan ang paggalang ng mga sundalo at pulis sa magkahiwalay na diniklarang tigil putukan. Ang pananatili na mga bata-batalyong mga sundalo ng AFP sa mga komunidad na mga magsasakat katutubo ay nagdudulot na maraming paglabag sa karapatang pantao at nagbibigay daan para ibayong pananalasa ng malalaking dayuhang minahan at plantasyon at pagpigil sa makatarungang pamamahagi ng lupa ng mga magsasaka. Ang nangyaring pangaharas sa mga guro, estudyante, at administrador ng palimbang Lumad School na mga elemento ng Gobyerno ay mariin din namin kinukundin na. From December 3, political prisoners in detention facilities nationwide, as well as human rights advocates, are staging a hunger strike that will culminate in the International Human Rights Day in December 10. The hunger strike demands for the immediate release of 400 political prisoners, especially the sick, elderly, and those who have been long detained. Yesterday, Representative Antonio Tinio and I joined the nationwide Hunger Strike for All Political Prisoners. We fasted yesterday in protest of the injustice of the government that considers service to the poor militancy and decent as rebellious and criminal. We call on President Duterte to free them now. We urge the government to protect the human rights of every Filipino. The ongoing peace negotiations between the government of the Philippines and the National Democratic Front of the Philippines will be pointless if the previously signed agreements, like the Comprehensive Agreement on Respect to Human Rights and International Humanitarian Law, or CARIL, and the Joint Agreement on the Safety and Immunity Guarantees, or JASIC, are ignored. Governments disregard of its duties under this agreement is what caused the criminalization of the activism of our political prisoners and the illegal arrests and detention of peace consultants. Hinihikayat ang lahat na makiisa sa Solidarity Fest na isinasagawa ngayon ang mga bilanggong politikal sa kanilang mga kaanak at ang kanilang mga kaanak at mga nagsusulong ng karapatang pantao. Palayain na ang lahat ng bilanggong politikal at lansagin ang Oplan Bayanihan tungo sa pagsulong ng usapang pangkapayapaan. Maraming salamat at magandang hapon po sa ating lahat.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpretate the Honorable Franz Castro, I move that her speech be referred to the Committee on Rules for its Appropriate Action.
Any objection? There being none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to refer the speech, the privileged speech, of the distinguished gentle lady from the Partilis Act Teacher to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we would like to acknowledge the guests in the gallery of Honorable Maria Lucille L. Naba, representative of the Lawn District of Gimaras. They are the municipal officials of the Lawn District of Gimaras. They are sanggulaybayan members Grace Gaetan, Honorable Edgar Gallo, Honorable Raquel Sambas, Honorable Cheryl Fernandez, and ABC President Honorable Ofilia Halandoni and Honorable Aster Brian Hiponia.
Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker, we would like also to acknowledge the presence in the gallery of the guest of the Honorable Yada Marie Romaldes, representative from the 1st District of Leyte. They are the honorable members, sanggulaybayan members Edgar Morden, Honorable Ben Calle, Honorable Jake Chan, and Honorable John Dimpas.
Welcome to the House of Representatives.
We would like also to acknowledge the presence in the gallery of the guest of Honorable Ramon Red H. Dorano VI, the representative from the 5th District of Cebu. They are the local government officials of the municipality of Borbon, headed by Vice Mayor Roy Melgo together with municipal councillors Abdun Kabahog, Honorable Moman Rivera, Honorable Anisito Monsellier, Honorable Vicente Cipolbeda Jr., Honorable Robert Bergara, Honorable Jesse Roy Melgo, and Honorable Joseph Rigoli, together with ABC President Barangay Captain Richard Antigua.
Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Lastly, Mr. Speaker, we would like to acknowledge the guests of the Honorable Representative Lopolda N. Batawian from the 2nd District of Pangasinan together with Honorable Amado Tispino of the 5th District of Pangasinan, and yours truly, Martin Premisia Segabas from the 6th District of Pangasinan. They are the municipal councillors and daycare workers of mga taram Pangasinan.
Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of unfinished business, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill Number 4144 as contained in Committee Report Number 35 submitted by the Committee on Ways and Means. And for this purpose, may I ask that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Any objection? The Chair hearing none, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 4144, an amending section 145C of the National Internal Revenue Code of 1997, as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the bill is that it is in the period of sponsorship and debate. I move that the Honorable Vakila Carlo Kuah from the Lawn District of Karino, the chairperson of the Committee on Ways and Means, be recognized.
The distinguished sponsor, chairman of the Committee on Ways and Means, Congressman Vakila Kuah is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This representation is ready to accept questions from any interested member. Would a good gentleman yield to...
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that the Honorable Ramon B. A. Rokamora from the Lawn District of Siquehor be recognized for his interpretation.
The distinguished Ramon Rokamora is hereby recognized.
Mr. Speaker, will the sponsor yield to interpretation of this representation?
Yes, it will be my pleasure, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, isn't the mandate of the Ways and Means Committee, is among others, to find ways to raise revenues and simplify tax administration? If so, would the good sponsor be willing to still consider a unitary tax of 40 per pack of cigarettes? Because, number one, revenues raised will go up to 142 billion point 69 versus the 125.544 billion estimated revenues from the two-third tax rate. And number two, a unitary excise tax rate will simplify tax collection. Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chair, please note that with the 40 unitary excise tax rates, there will be a reduction in cigarette consumption by at least 2 million packs annually. At the same time, increase in revenues by 20 billion pesos more than the what is proposed in HB 4144.
Thank you, dear colleague, for that question. Yes, this representation is open to studying the proposal of 40 pesos unitary tax on tobacco. We believe it is... it may result to higher revenues for the government. We hope to ask the relevant government agencies to submit position papers on this laudable proposal, your honor.
Will the sponsor also, rather, is the sponsor also willing to consider unitary tax?
Yes, your honor, on a personal level, this representation is open to consider unitary tax. However, in the process that was conducted in the committee, we have to, again, see the impact on the local farmers producing the tobacco. If indeed, this will contribute to better benefits for their families.
You were speaking about the tobacco farmers, that they will be affected by this increase. But how are the tobacco farmers actually affected? Considering that at least 70% of the production are exported and therefore not subject to the syntax. And even the remaining 30%, what they will be selling are raw materials and therefore not also subject to syntax.
Mr. Speaker, I consulted with the National Tobacco Administration. The representative is present today. And he mentioned to me that in the most current data, only 30% of the locally produced tobacco is exported. 70% are actually consumed here or purchased here. Perhaps the data by our distinguished colleague refers to the data which includes the tobacco which is imported, processed, and re-exported. That's why the number is different. But according to the NTA, Mr. Speaker, 30% lang daw po ang ine-export. So this means that more of the tobacco produced in the country is sold and consumed in the country. Which means that any bias against the locally produced tobacco really will adversely affect the livelihood of the tobacco farmers.
Mr. Speaker, regardless of the ratio, because if it's exported, syntax is not applicable. If it is locally consumed, since the tobacco producers sell only raw materials, still syntax is not applicable. So in what way will the local tobacco farmers be affected by this law, the syntax?
Sa pag-aaral po ng National Tobacco Administration, if you put a bias against the value-priced cigarettes, which is the main market to which the tobacco farmers sell their products. which is the main market to which the tobacco farmers sell their produce, then the shrinking of the market share of the value cigarettes will obviously redound to the shrinking of the demand for the locally produced tobacco, thereby affecting the lives of the tobacco farmers.
Mr. Speaker, I thank the proponent for considering the possibility of imposing the 40 pesos per pack. In due time, Mr. Speaker, I will propose the amendment for unitary tax rate of 40 per packs starting January 2017. And in addition, 5 pesos per year to settle at 60 per pack by 2021. And thereafter, increase it by 4% annually. On another point, Mr. Speaker, we are all aware of the glaring statistics. 10 Filipinos die every hour due to smoking-related diseases. That's 87,600 deaths per year. There are actually those who are not really direct smokers, but get sick and die because of second-hand smoke inhalation. In other words, your honor, the negative effect of smoking is a concern for each and every one of us. As such, we should provide adequate healthcare programs and facilities to our people to respond to this. Would the good sponsor be willing to accept an amendment that shall equally, I repeat, equally allocate 20% of the incremental revenues from the cigarette tax to all legislative districts to provide for healthcare programs and facilities provision and improvements? If he is open, then I thank you. I will introduce the proper amendment in time. But if the committee is willing, perhaps, if incorporate it as part of the committee amendments, then I would also thank him for that.
Mr. Speaker, the objective of the Honorable Rokamora is indeed full of wisdom. I subscribe to his objective. But perhaps it is noteworthy to know that, at current design, the syntax already remits 80% of its revenues to the field health program. And such program is already distributed among all provinces, municipalities, and most especially legislative districts. And therefore, it already addresses the need. In fact, the revenue of syntax has been so well implemented that Field Health is now able to offer point-of-care services to our constituents. So if our dear colleague will be amenable that this design already addresses his concern and already distributes the revenues to all legislative districts, then maybe we can move forward on this matter.
Mr. Speaker, we cannot say that we have provided already so much. Because this, as I've said, is a great concern for the Filipino people. What I propose is 20% of the incremental revenues from cigarette. So with that, Mr. Speaker, we end our interpolation. Thank you very much.
We appreciate.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, we very much thank the Honorable Rokamora for his notable contributions in crafting this legislation.
Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the next member who wishes to interpolate the sponsor is the gentleman from the 2nd District of Kagayan de Oro City, the Honorable Maximo Rodriguez. I move that we recognize him for his interpolation.
Thank you.
Distinguished Representative Maximo Rodriguez is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Would the gentleman allow interpolation?
It would be my honor, your honor.
As we know, we passed Republic Act 10351, popularly known as Syntax Reform Act, 1913. And in that law, there was a provision that by the year 2017, from the two-tiered system, we'll be having only one unitary tax scheme. Is that correct?
Yes, that is the scheduled tax rate in 2017.
Well, I don't really want to deal with the wisdom, because you have the right, all of us have the right, to propose taxes. But I'm concerned more on the effects of the tobacco farmers who shall be affected with this proposed law, if ever it becomes a law. How would it be that tobacco farmers would benefit from this proposed two-tiered system, maintaining the two-tiered system now we have? How would it affect the farmers?
Which one, your honor, the two-tiered?
The proposed one, the proposed one, yes.
It is the apprehension of the tobacco-producing regions and their representatives here in Congress that a unitary tax system will put a bias against the value-priced cigarettes, or the lower-tiered priced cigarettes, which is the main market onto which the local tobacco producers sell their produce. So if the market shifts towards the premium cigarettes and against the value cigarettes, then the apprehension will be the market for the locally-produced tobacco will shrink, and therefore affect prices and the demand for their produce.
Well, does the effect for this proposed two-tiered system payment scheme on the new proposed measure that you have? Well, have you have any data on how the farmers were affected when the Syntax Reform Act, the said law, was approved and it became effective? And now it's in the fourth, fifth year, I guess. Did you have any data on the actual performance of the farmers? Noting how many hectares were they able to till, and how much produce they were able, how much products they produced in those years? I think the National Tobacco Administration would have a data on that. Because the data would show that the scheme now that we have since 1913 has adversely affected the tobacco farmers nationwide. And this proposed measure would further have a detrimental effect on the farmers in the country. I think the National Tobacco Administration, who is an agency tasked with this, would have the concerned data on that.
Yes, your honor, I was informed by the National Tobacco Administration that prior to the syntax implementation, the volume of production of tobacco in the country was approximately 72 million kilos. And to the most recent data, after the implementation, it was reduced down to approximately 52 million kilos. So there was already a significant reduction in production.
Yes, but in addition to that, in 2015, there was more significant adverse effect, because when you said it's 55,000 kilos, or 67 kilos in the first 2013, I have here the data. In 2014, it went down to 68, and in 2015, it went down to 51,000 kilos already. And would you also consider how many, how much the area was reduced as shown by this decreasing productivity by the tobacco farmers?
Your honor, the data tells us that in 2015, there are only 4.9 million hectares dedicated to tobacco.
As against the previous year, what was the previous year, you know? According to my data, in 2014, the area covered was 38,000 hectares. And then in 2015, the area decreased to 32,000. And then in 2016, this year, it's only 28 hectares, 28,000 hectares, thereby reducing to several thousands of hectares. The actual areas being used to produce tobacco.
That's, I would subscribe. I presume that the data is correct.
I was just thinking, what benefit? In what way will this proposed measure give the benefit to our farmers? Because as I read the House Bill 4144, there was a specific mention on how to benefit the tobacco farmers. Because as you have said now, according to the data of the National Tobacco Administration, there was a decrease in the production, because there was a decrease in the area that was planted owing to the Syntax Reform Act as embodied in Republic Act 10351.
Your honor, the scenario of a unitary tax system will enhance, or will further reduce the hectareage and the area of production. And probably also reduce the value of the produce, because the demand becomes smaller. And therefore, liliit na ang presyo, bababa ang presyo ng tobacco na pinagbebentahan ng mga tobacco farmers, at the same time, liliit din po ang demand. So kung ang objective natin is to exterminate the tobacco farming industry, then perhaps that is the correct approach, your honor.
Well, otherwise, I'm just saying out loud that what you're saying now is the complete opposite of the effects of this proposed law. Because in this proposed law, you intend to maintain the two-tiered system of taxing to a value of 32 pesos for a lower brand, lower-quality brand, and for 36 for the higher-quality brand. And that is way up above the program 30 pesos in 2017. That is a big difference in the price of tobacco, of the cigarette, I mean. And so, if we have to interpolate the production that would be affected and the area to be planted, it would surmise that the production will have to go down. As shown in the data of the National Tobacco Administration, there will be a slowdown on the production of tobacco if you go to 32 and 36 respectively, with the poor and the cheap and the high-priced cigarettes. And there would be less lands to be cultivated, because you have shown the data already, you know? So I'm just saying the fact that the assumption that the proposed measure 4144 provides welfare to the tobacco farmers in particular would not have any effect at all than to decrease production and to decrease the area of production. Meaning, there will be no benefit to the poor farmers, tobacco farmers, that will have the effect of this House Bill 4144.
Mr. Speaker, this representation subscribes to the assumption of the Honorable Rodriguez in that this bill perhaps will still continue the shrinking of the area of plantation of tobacco. But it is the assumption also of this representation that if there is a unitary tax system on tobacco, and it is to be implemented, then the rate of shrinking of this area for plantation will be far faster and greater. Mas mabilis na magsh-shrink ang production, mas mabilis na liliit ang demand, as compared to a two-tiered tax system.
Well, I think otherwise, because you know, you have not shown my honorable colleague that this can really give benefits to our farmers. Because you know, in this country, two sectors of our society, particularly farmers and fishermen, are very poor. In fact, in the many surveys that we read, farmers and fishermen are placed in the bottom of the strata of the standard of living. And I believe that the House Bill 4144 will further push them down, the farmers, you know? Instead of pushing you up, because you know, you increase the prices, therefore, there is already a pressure that many will be able to buy, many will be able to sell. And therefore, there is no activity of demand and supply. And therefore, there's a disruption, and therefore, the demand for tobacco would really go down. And for that, the actual hectareage will go down much further, and there will be no labor to talk about, no labor to till, and no land to till, until there is no interest at all to till, because there's no demand at all. And so, Mr. Speaker, my colleague, I have the opinion that maybe you have to reconsider looking at the provisions of this law. That is the first angle, that is a problem with the farmers, because this will really affect adversely the farmers. The second is the administrative angle, where the Department of Finance would have a difficult time to implement a two-tiered system. The purpose of Republic Act 10351 or the Syntax Reform Act was to streamline the collection, the administrative collection of the tobacco industry. And this was achieved by the progressive increase of taxes and the smaller bracketing already of this two-tiered system that we have. And I think the Department of Finance is on its way to a unitary scheme, where there is a simple and practical approach to the administrative angle of collecting or having an efficient collection of taxes. That is the second angle, my distinguished colleague, that a unitary collection is a more efficient mode than a two-tiered system. Because in a two-tiered system, even those in the higher tier would escape the collection because they will be open to fraud, and they would try to have a lower tier wherein less collection of taxes can be had. That's the problem with it, isn't it, distinguished colleague?
Your honor, this representation agrees with the observation and assumptions of the Honorable Rodriguez. Tama po na kung dalawang tier, mas mahirap ma-administer ng ating Finance Department as compared to a single tier. What the committee strives to achieve is a balance between interests of our members in Congress. The balance of the interests of the tobacco-producing farmers and regions and their representatives here in Congress, balance between the interests of Finance Department in raising new revenue for the government, and balance in the interest of health insofar as generating more revenue for the field health insurance program and more money for the Department of Health, which they can use to improve our healthcare facilities among others.
I know the sin tax bill, the law itself, have reaped many benefits to our country, especially the field health and others, you know. But at this particular time of our country where we need to balance the interests of farmers with the country and the collection of taxes and how would it affect supply and demand in favor of the farmers, then I think we should look back on the records of the NTA. It shows that in from 2013 to 2016 this year, there was a decrease of productivity of the farmers. Meaning, there was less purchasing power, less income. And this is because there was less interest in the production, in the use of land. And then we see the decrease of use of land up to this year. So, distinguished colleague, I would like to ask you to revisit 4144. And you said that the Department of Health, VAR, Department of Finance would seem to approve with this bill, proposed bill. But the Department of Finance says that the collection of taxes would be simpler with a unitary tax system. They're not in favor of two-tiered system. And then the VAR also said that the unitary excise tax is simpler to administer. The Bureau of Enteller Revenue and also the Department of Health says that it would favor a singular unitary system because it would avoid the downshifting of those two-tiered taxes shifting to a lower and then curbing the consumption of those products, you know. So, in all, distinguished colleague, I have seen a reason why we should disturb the excise sin tax that we have already, sin tax reform act, because it has reaped benefits to our health. It has given benefits to our health centers, hospitals, and anything, or medicines. But to change that now would have an effect on the administrative, on the farmers, be detrimental to it. And even those collecting the taxes, Department of Finance and the VAR because it would have a complex and poor collection later on because of the system itself, which we want to change now from the two-tiered system to a one-unitary system only.
Mr. Speaker, this representation begs to differ. Inasmuch that, ang pangarap ng panukalang ito ay matulungan ang kaunti o mapahaba ng kaunti ang buhay ng tobacco-producing industry. Ang paniniwala ng may akda ng panukalang ito ay kung maglilipat ang ating sistema sa iisang rate of taxation sa lahat ng tobacco, then ang mangyayari ay it puts a bias. Malalagay sa alanganin ang lower tier or value cigarettes. Yan po ang nais nating ipanating na pangamba ng ating mga kasamahan sa Kongreso na nanggagaling sa tobacco-producing regions. On the health aspect, Mr. Speaker, ang sinasabi po ng Health Department ay kung dalawang tier may downshifting. Tama rin po sila. Tama 'yung kanilang paniniwala na kung dalawa ang tax rates 'yung mga bumibili ng mas mahal na sigarilyo pag tinaasan natin ang buwis, lilipat sa mas mura. Totoo po yon. Pero parang hindi nila nakikita ang katotohanan na ang pinapanukalan ng ating may akda ay 32 pesos for the lower tier. Mas mura po yon dun sa scheduled 30 pesos unitary tax in 2017. So, ang ibig sabihin niyan as a health, ano, health angle, between 32 and 30, mas prohibitive po ang panukalang ito kesa sa regular schedule ng ating current sin tax law. On the revenue side, Your Honor, obvious naman po nalalaki ang koleksyon ng gobyerno para matupad ang mga pangako ng ating Pangulo na magbigay ng mas magandang kinabukasan sa bawat Pilipino. So, we believe, we believe that this bill is balanced. Perhaps it's lacking in one aspect. Perhaps tama ang ating kaibigan mula sa Cagendao Olo na hihirap ng kaunti ang trabaho ng VAR. Ngunit, ang katumbas naman ito ay ang paghaba ng kaunti ang, ng buhay ng mga na sa industriya ng pagsasakan ng tobacco. Yun po ang binabalansin natin. That has always been the point of argument, Mr. Speaker. That has always been in the first sin tax legislation process. In the current amendments, yun naman po talaga ang pinag-uusapan dito. Should we immediately cast the death sentence on the tobacco-producing industry? Or should we prolong it a little bit? Protect the farmers a little bit? Achieve the reduction of smoking prevalence? And at the same time, generate more revenue for the government? Yun po ang aming pananaw na aming, kung bakit itong panukala ay sinusuportahan ng Committee on Ways and Means.
Yes, that's your concern. It's very loable, distinguished proponent. There's only one thing, last one thing I want to stress that in this law, have you considered looking at how it would affect in whole tobacco industry? They say that the power to tax goes with it the power to destroy. You know, when you, from 30 unitary price, bring it up to 32 and 36, that is a big disparity. There's a big increase in the prices. Well, we have tried it in the year 2013. A pack of cigarettes only 2 pesos and 70 centavos. And we had it increased to 30 this coming 2017. But if you put it at 32 and 36, then you destroy the tobacco industry. Then we have a saying, which is now looking quite obvious, that the power to tax now is used to power to destroy. I hope that would not happen to us, that would not happen to our industry, tobacco industry. I am always looking at the wisdom of Congress to look at the different sides of the coin and discern from the wisdom we have and we have learned and look at the actual the actual conditions of our farmers, who will be directly affected with this measure. I hope that doesn't happen. I hope that this power to tax here in this instance at House Bill 4144 would not be a power to destroy.
Thank you. We share that hopeful assessment of the gentleman from Cagendao Olo. That is obviously not the objective, to destroy the industry. In fact, the objective is to prolong the life of the tobacco-producing industry. Inasmuch that there are more, the premium line of tobacco cigarettes use more exports or exported, ah, imports or imported tobacco in their product than the local produce. And therefore, we hope that maybe the gentleman from Cagendao Olo will continue his pursuit to help us craft this legislation to be in its best version possible.
Thank you. And I am with you in the farmer for a better law. I'm with you for the clamor for the benefit of the tobacco-farming industry. I have no further declarations, honorable speaker. Thank you, my distinguished colleague. Thank you.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, Your Honor, at this juncture, we'd like to acknowledge certain guests. The guests of Deputy Speaker Frederick Abueg, namely, Senior Deputy City Attorney Henry Abueg Impeno Jr. of the City of San Bernardino, USA, and former Deputy Administrator of the Land Registration Authority Attorney Ofelia Abueg Santa Maria.
Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Furthermore, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor, we would like also to acknowledge the guests of the Honorable Gabriel Bordado from the Municipality of Magarao Camarinisur, namely, Mayor Philip Salvador, Vice Mayor Randy Villaralbo, Councilor Edmund Bidiones, Councilor Tomas Libera, Councilors Carlos Sambho, Councilor Bernadette Munet, Councilor Antonio Rubio, Councilor Antonio Antonio, Councilor Teresita Blaza, and Councilor Edmundo Bustamante.
Welcome to the House of Representatives.
At this juncture, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor, we would like to acknowledge the honorable former Senator Pia Kaitano for recognized for her interpolation.
The distinguished gentlelady from Taguig, Congresswoman Pia Kaitano is recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd just like to put on record also that my interest and concern for this measure is also stems from the fact that I was the principal sponsor of the existing Republic Act governing sin tax in the Senate. So, this is very close to my heart because the health and welfare for Filipino people, including the tobacco-producing Filipinos, is something I also care very deeply about. I will proceed with the indulgence of the sponsor.
Yes, it would be my honor, Mr. Speaker, to receive questions from the distinguished Deputy Speaker.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to know that under the existing Republic Act, which is in effect, in January, a unitary system would come into effect. And therefore, this measure that is on the floor is intended to disrupt the start of the unitary tax system. Is that clear?
Your Honor, as to the intention, it is not within our control because it is subject to the process of the Senate. And therefore, we really have no basis of decision whether or not it will reach before January or even pass at all in the other chamber. So, hindi po natin masabi kung ano talaga ang magiging resulta ng ating pagkasusulong ng... Ang pinaglalaban natin is to further this measure as proposed by one of our colleagues.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, the Republic Act will put into place a unitary system in January 2017. And what is being proposed now is a two-tiered system that is being opposed by the Department of Finance and the Department of Health. So, despite the objections of the two major agencies and the Department of Finance being the body that will implement the collection of the taxation, the committee is of the view that a two-tiered system should be put in place and that the unitary system should not even be given a chance?
That is not the view of this representation, Your Honor. First, let me note that this Congress is an independent institution from that of the executive. We value their inputs. We always respect their opinions. We even solicit their position papers. And we hear their arguments. But at the end of the day, we, the representatives of the people, have to decide based on our consciences and the interests of our constituents. Sa amin po, Mr. Speaker, ang aming pananaw ay, ang panukalang ito ay nasaayos po. Kaya po aming isinusulong ang panukala ng ating kasamahan.
Our president, Rudy Duterte, is known for a number of things. One is his fight against crime and corruption. Another is his fight for health. He is a known advocate of reproductive health and he is also a known anti-smoking advocate. On that note, the Department of Health has also echoed their concern that this measure, this two-tiered measure, which puts a big tax rate on the more expensive brands and a lower tax rate to the cheaper brands, will make it more accessible to the most vulnerable sector of our society, the youth. May I know from the sponsor how they intend to address this? Or if they have even considered this?
Salamat po sa tanong na yan. Pinag-aralan po namin yan at pinag-isipan ng matagal, Mr. Speaker. Ang paniniwala po namin tulad ng aking napaliwanag kanina sa ating mga kasamahan ay mas nakakabawas ng smoking po, o paninigarilyo, ang panukalang ito. Ito ay mas makakapag-discourage ng mga first-time smokers dahil ang pinapanukalan natin ay dihamak na mas mataas na buwis na 32 for the lower tier and 36 for the higher tier as compared to the scheduled 30 pesos unitary tax in 2017. Tama po ang ating kagalang-galang na Deputy Speaker na kung tayo ay mag-two-tier, maaari pong mag-downshift. Ang ibig po sabihin ng DOH dyan ay 'yung mga gumagamit ng mas mahal na sigarilyo dahil tinaas po natin ang buwis, maaaring lumipat sa mas murang sigarilyo. Pero kung ang mas murang sigarilyo ay mas mahal pa rin sa scheduled 30 pesos lamang na tax, then hindi po ba mas babawas ang smoking sa panukalang ito?
But then don't you achieve, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor, the honorable sponsor has mentioned that he is after balance. Don't you achieve both goals better if you have a unitary system with a higher tax rate altogether? Then you have your higher collection and you prevent the youth from accessing cheap cigarettes. Why was that considered, Mr. Speaker?
Unfortunately, Mr. Speaker, there was a proposed bill filed on this only two days ago. And since it was late in filing, it did not reach the process. But we, in the Committee on Ways and Means, are very interested in taking it up considering the proposal of our colleagues for a unitary 40 peso tax rate for tobacco when it's been referred to the committee. Mr. Speaker, ang, ang balance po na sinasabi na ating kagalang-galang na Deputy Speaker does not put into consideration those being espoused by our tobacco-producing farmers. It does not consider the sentiments of our colleagues in Congress who represent these farmers. They are the ones who are advocating this measure. They are the ones who are pushing for this in their belief that a unitary tax system will put bias against the livelihood of their tobacco-producing farmers.
Mr. Speaker, kindly enlighten me on that note. You mentioned earlier, I was listening to the earlier questions propounded, that what you are trying to address is the bias against value-priced cigarettes. So, you are referring to the cheaper cigarettes that, from my understanding... So you are referring to the cheaper cigarettes that, from my understanding, you are saying are currently biased, are biased against now, hence the new measure, correct?
Yes, Your Honor.
And your theory being that with a unitary tax, there is a bias against the cheaper tobacco products produced by our tobacco-producing regions, correct?
Yes, Your Honor.
But kindly enlighten me, I have of this understanding that our tobacco is used as fillers for both cheap brands and expensive brands. Therefore, regardless of the purchase of cheap or expensive tobacco, you would still have buyers of our locally-produced tobacco. Am I wrong?
You are certainly not wrong, Your Honor, but it is more complex as against that simplistic statement, Your Honor, in the sense that there are farmers, or a lot of farmers, produce the fillers. But also, there are some farmers who produce the flavor tobacco.
Sorry, I missed that. Produce the...
The flavor tobacco.
Flavor.
Which is not the filler, the non-fillers tobacco. So it is not as if everybody, all the farmers, produce just one variety in the country. In fact, there are many varieties being planted in the country. And therefore, we try to consider the interest of most, if not all, of the tobacco farmers.
But the bulk are fillers. Am I wrong?
Perhaps you're right, Your Honor.
So when we talk about the livelihood and the welfare of tobacco farmers, let's recognize that the majority of those who produce tobacco will be able to sell the tobacco regardless of the change of system that you are producing. It cannot be the reason for the change then?
It is, Your Honor, because the premium cigarettes, although they buy from the local industry, buy at smaller quantities and ratios than the value cigarettes. Hindi namang pareho ang blend nila. It 'yung po talaga ang value cigarettes ang mas bumibili ng ating local produce.
Noted. On that matter, however, in previous Congresses, we have passed laws that precisely address this. There are taxes, tax collections, that go precisely to tobacco-producing regions. And based on DBM Local Budget Memorandum 72 and 73, tobacco farmers should have received a significant increase from these earmarked revenues, specifically 5.6 billion in 2014 and 10.7 billion in 2015. So did we not do our job in the previous Congresses by addressing the specific needs of these farmers? Because, I will say later on, the health repercussion of more cigarette smoking will affect all Filipinos wherever the region they're from, whatever industry they are in. So this was earmarked specifically to address their needs. Is it not sufficient?
It is not that it is not sufficient, Your Honor, Mr. Speaker. During our hearing in the Committee on Ways and Means, the tobacco farmers articulated a few problems with the current law. Ang sabi nila, although meron nga pong pondo, hindi man po lahat nagtatranslate to improvement of their lives. Tama po, some of it go to livelihood programs, alternative livelihood programs for the farmers. Some also go to farm-to-market roads that they benefit from, but perhaps not as directly as if they made their living from the sale of their produce, of their blood and sweat in the produce of their crops.
So why would this measure directly affect them? Why this measure versus the current measure that will come into play in January?
Because, Your Honor, as stated previously, our colleagues from the tobacco-producing regions are of the apprehension that such measure or implementation of a unitary tax system puts a bias against the value cigarettes, which is the main buyers of the tobacco produce. So siyempre po, kapag lumit ang demand for the local tobacco produce, baba din po ang presyo. Mas mabilis pong mamamatay ang industriya ng pagtatanim ng tobacco.
Well, I'd just like to reiterate that the sponsor himself agreed with the information I gave that the majority of the tobacco farmers are producing fillers and therefore they would not be affected. Be that as it may, I will move on to my next point. The health component, his honor had said, is something that they also took into consideration. If we look at the projected revenues for this tax measure, if I'm not mistaken, it is 125.5 billion projected excise tax revenues and projected allocation for farmers is 9.4 billion to 11.3. Is that correct? Is that correct? Just to be sure that I'm reading the right numbers into the record.
We...
Or you can give your figures. What are your projected revenues with your proposal?
I will take your word for it, Mr. Speaker. I presume it's correct, Your Honor.
Around 125 billion, no? 125 billion. Well, to put on record, the health cost to our nation specifically attributed to cigarette smoking is 188 billion pesos, a far cry from the 125 billion that will come in as revenues. This is broken down by the following: lung cancer, chronic pulmonary disease, coronary artery disease, and vascular disease. And then there is also a productivity loss because they cannot go to work. And then there are also premature deaths, so the effect on the families when somebody prematurely dies. All over the world, they're putting a cost on the health cost when you try to calculate the effect of a program. So when you look at your revenue generation, if the revenue generation is lower than the projected health risk, the health cost, then it's really something that I feel we should all be conscious about. Because no collection can come up with that amount of money. And that these are figures given to us by our scientists and health professionals. They may have given it to the committee. May I know how the sponsor intends to address this? I know because I was listening to his responses that there is the Phil Health contribution, et cetera. But those are remedial measures. You need to approach healthcare from a preventive measure. You cannot just put poor funds into healthcare system to address the diseases that you yourself create. So by creating an atmosphere, an environment of smoking, we're just putting money in one end and paying it through another, and still it's not enough. So may I hear from the sponsor on this?
Your Honor, when I mentioned that we are considering the health angle on this proposed measure, ang ibig po namin sabihin is that gusto rin namin ipagpatuloy ang layunin na mabawasan ang prevalence of smoking. But be that as it may, I share the wisdom and the statement of our Deputy Speaker na dapat talagang maadres. Yan lang po ay nasa administrative side na po yan, nasa executive function na po yan. We are trying to generate as much revenue as possible to be remitted to the coffers of the national government. And hopefully, we can work hand-in-hand with the Deputy Speaker and address the Secretary of Health to put more bias towards preventive measures as against the remedial or curative measures. Sangayon po ako dyan, alam ko po na an ounce of prevention is much better than a pound of remedy. Hindi po kami nagkakaiba ng pananaw.
Mr. President, I disagree with... Mr. Speaker, I disagree with the honorable sponsor in casting that burden on the Department of Health alone. Every effective health promotion program has been shown to include not just an education and awareness program, not just funding for the health programs and the health facilities, but also responsive taxation. That is very basic in any health promotion program. So it is our burden, members of Congress, my colleagues, it is our burden to decide when we approve a tax measure, the balance, the difficulty that we face should include that responsibility on our shoulders of the health effects of our nation, not just those from the South, not just those from Metro Manila, but also those from the North. So as I am one with our colleagues in improving the lives of our tobacco-producing region, I have supported the laws in the past that put more funding into these tobacco-producing regions. I am also one with the health advocates and those who believe that this particular tax measure is moving in the wrong direction, that a multi-tiered system, a double-tiered system, will create a structure that is, one, difficult for our DOF to implement and collect, and, number two, make the burden on healthcare for our Filipinos very difficult. With all due respect, I am going to vote for the negative in this measure. I fully support the objective to raise more funds, but it should be done in a responsible way. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Sponsor, for your time.
Thank you, distinguished Deputy Speaker, for her insightful interpretation.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I'm able to recognize the gentleman from the First District of Albay for his interpretation, the Honorable Elsie Lagman.
The distinguished gentleman from the First District of Albay, Congressman Elsie Lagman, is here by recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Let me first thank the distinguished Chairman of the Committee on Ways and Means for giving to this representation through Deputy Majority Leader Bondok some of the documents which I requested yesterday. For the record, I received the transcript of the photographic notes of the two committee meetings. Unfortunately, I have no time to go over the voluminous transcript because they were given to me only at about 4:30 this afternoon. Also, what was given to me was the letter of the National Tobacco Administration and the position paper of the Department of Health. I have not received the copies of the position papers of the tobacco farmers as well as that of the civil society organizations and also the BAR position paper. But I was informed by the technical staff that the BAR did not submit any position paper, but a representative testified before the committee objecting to the passage of this measure and reiterated its advocacy for the retention of the one-year regime starting 2017. Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, may I get the confirmation of the distinguished chairman that the Bureau of Internal Revenue did not submit its position paper?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, there was no submission from the Bureau of Internal Revenue.
But the testimony of its representative, who opposed the bill, declared that a unitary excise tax regime is simpler to administer. Is that correct?
That is correct, Your Honor.
I have not also received the position paper of the Department of Finance. Did the Department of Finance submit its position paper?
No, Your Honor, they did not submit.
But it was reported to me that the Department of Finance opposes House Bill 4144. It is in favor of a unitary tax structure under the current law, Republic Act 10351, and under the sixteen law, farmers benefit from the funds earmarked of about 15% of the total incremental revenue on an annual basis. Is that report to me on the opposition of the Department of Finance correct?
Yes, Your Honor.
How many government agencies were invited to give their inputs for or against this House bill?
I believe, Mr. Speaker, we had the Department of Finance, the Health Department, the Bureau of Internal Revenue. We had as well the National Tax Research. And we had the DTI was invited. We had the National Tobacco Administration. We had a representative from the League of Provinces. Those were the ones invited. I may have overlooked one or two.
So let me just recap. Of those agencies invited, the Department of Finance opposed House Bill 4144. The Bureau of Internal Revenue likewise opposed the passage of House Bill 4144. The Department of Health also opposed the enactment of House Bill 4144. In fact, the National Tax Research Center, NTRC, was not in favor of House Bill 4144 and recommended maintaining the current law with the eventual unitary system in 2017. So all of the government agencies invited were against House Bill Number 4144, except the National Tobacco Administration. Is that correct?
I believe you are correct, Your Honor.
In other words, we have a situation where all of the government agencies were opposed to this bill and only one favored the enactment of the bill. And with respect to the concern, tobacco manufacturers, all were against, except one, the mighty corporation. Is that correct?
We recall that Anglo-American was not opposed.
Was not?
Opposed, and was in favor of the measure.
Was not opposed or was in favor?
In favor with request, with a request to widen the gap between the two-tier rates.
Now, did Anglo-American submit its position paper?
Yes, Your Honor.
That is not part of this submission given to me, Your Honor.
We will hand it to you at the moment if you wish, Your Honor. We we were not informed of the request of that.
I was requesting for all position papers submitted to the committee.
We apologize for that oversight, Your Honor.
And if that is available, I would appreciate having a copy so that I can peruse that position paper.
Yes, Your Honor.
How about NGOs from civil society? Were they also invited to appear?
Yes, they were, Your Honor.
And what was the position of the NGOs? I understand all of the NGOs were against the bill.
Yes, Your Honor.
Oh, yes. Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, I submit that House Bill 4144 runs counter to the spirit of the sin tax reform law. A unitary system is designed to maximize health results by decreasing significantly the number of smokers because there is no more shifting to lower-priced cigarettes. It optimizes revenue collection because there is only one tier where tax evasion is minimized. And it also eases tax administration because there is only one tier or a unitary system. With all of these laudable objectives of the present sin tax reform law, I see no reason why we will have to change the system. And let me go back to the position of the Department of Health. According to the Department of Health, a position paper signed by no less than the Secretary of Health, Pauline Obial, it presented five reasons in objecting to House Bill 4144. Number one, retaining a two-tiered structure goes against the best practice in taxing tobacco products. Will the distinguished sponsor recall such position?
Yes, Your Honor.
Let me just, for the record, read its submission under number one. Tobacco is the single biggest cause of cancer in the world and causes one of every three deaths from cardiovascular diseases. The health consequence of smoking, a cheap cigarette, and a more expensive premium cigarettes are the same. That is the reason Republic Act 10351 mandates a uniform excise tax for all cigarettes by 2017, whether hand-rolled, machine-made, premium or low-cost cigarettes. Indeed, the global best practice in tobacco taxation policy is uniform-specific taxation for the following reasons. First, a uniform tax structure is easier to administer compared to a tiered system. Second, uniform system enhances the public health impact of tobacco taxation as it eliminates the price gaps between premium and lower-priced cigarettes and therefore minimizes opportunities to switch to less expensive cigarette brands. Third, the concern on safeguards for farmers were already considered in the implementing rules and regulations of Republic Act 10351. Rule five on utilization of local government share where fifteen percent of the incremental revenues are earmarked for programs and projects responsive to tobacco farmers' needs. Would the distinguished chairman recall the submission to this effect by the Department of Health?
Yes, Your Honor.
In this submission, it says that the global practice is the adoption of a regime of a unitary or one-tiered system. And I am informed that so many countries have adopted the unitary system. And among which are Australia, Japan, Ireland and Thailand, among others. But I can enumerate the other countries which have adopted the system, like Albania, Australia, Azerbaijan, Barbados, Botswana, Brunei, Canada, Cook Islands, Cuba, Ecuador, Haiti, Honduras, Eboricos, Jamaica, Japan, Lesotho, Macau, Malawi, Mauritius, Manibya, Nicaragua, Norway, Panama, Peru, Singapore, South Africa, South Korea, Suriname, Taiwan, Trinidad and Tobago, the United States, among many others. And would the distinguished gentleman, sponsor of this measure, tell us what is the experience in these countries which have adapted the unitary system?
I regret, Mr. Speaker, I am not competent to answer the question as to the experience of the other countries.
Well, was there any research conducted by the technical staff of the Committee on Ways and Means as a comparative study on the experience of countries which have adapted the unitary or one-tiered system? So that it could be properly it could properly be informed of such experience to guide the committee in making a decision on whether or not to propose the adoption of this measure?
Your Honor, it is the it is the this representation is of the belief that the experience of a tax measure or a system of taxation would differ for each country. Not all countries have tobacco-producing communities. Not all countries have value, different values or prices of tobacco products. Well, all of them probably have different prices. But we believe that there's no there's no wisdom in copying the practice of other countries. This is the Philippines is in fact a heralded country for its efforts on this sin tax measure on which the distinguished gentleman from Albaí was very much a big part of its crafting. And it was also lauded even in its phase when it was still two-tiered, in the sense that it was still effective in curbing the prevalence of smoking and funding the initiatives of the Health Department inasmuch as providing healthcare for most, if not all, of the Filipinos. So, Mr. Speaker, hindi naman po siguro kailangan kopiahin ang experience ng ibang bansa. Ang mahalaga namang po ay ang experience ng Pilipinas.
Hindi naman panukala ng representasyon na ito na kopiahin natin ang experience ng ibang bansa. Sinasabi ko lang na mas mabuti pag-aralan natin ang experience ng ibang bansa upang mabigyan tayo ng sapat na impormasyon tungkol sa ginagawa nila. And it is a practice of all parliaments or legislators that we try to find out what is the state of the law in other countries for our guidance, not for us to copy, but to be guided accordingly. But how can the distinguished chairman say that the distinctions or the identities are not relevant considering that there has been no study made by the distinguished chairman or the technical staff on the experience of other countries which have adapted the unitary or one-tiered system? So there is no basis for that statement except the opinion of the distinguished chairman, which may be valid, but it's not empirically based. Let me go to the second objection of the Department of Health. The proposed increase in excise taxes is welcome, but this should not come at the expense of retaining a two-tiered structure. A two-tiered structure will encourage downward shifting to lower brands, thereby defeating the goal of public health in reducing tobacco use. Would the distinguished chairman recall this second objection of the Department of Health?
Yes, Your Honor.
And to amplify such objection, the Department of Health said, "Survey results show marked decrease in the prevalence of tobacco consumption among adults." "The national nutrition and health survey showed a decrease in tobacco smokers from thirty-one percent in 2008 to twenty-three point three percent in 2015." "The global audit tobacco survey shows the same decreasing result from twenty-eight point three in 2009 to twenty-two point seven in 2015 among tobacco smokers and from twenty-seven percent in 2009 to twenty-one point five in 2015 among cigarette smokers. However, further analysis of the behavior of current smokers shows that seventy-one percent of current smokers changed brands due to the price increase of the previous brand or decrease in the price of the current brand. This finding implies that the availability of cheaper options for smokers will sustain will be sustained by a two-tiered tax structures, defeating the goal of reducing deaths and disease by reducing tobacco use. Will the distinguished sponsor recall the statement I just read from the Department of Health?
Yes, Your Honor, I have a copy of the position paper.
This copying is not duty smoking. I assure you. Number three, retaining a two-tiered structure potentially exposes the Philippines to a WTO challenge. Would the distinguished sponsor confirm this statement from the Department of Health?
Well, Your Honor, yes, yes. It is just curious to note that the Health Department is delving into the the World Trade Organization issues when in fact it would be more proper to stay on the health issues.
Well, the World Trade Organization issues would impact on health issues. That is why the Department of Health invoked the World Trade Organization issue. Let me read the justification for the third reason. And I quote, "The Philippines lost a WTO case in the case of distill spirits because there was a de facto discrimination when the excise taxes applied for locally manufactured distill spirits were much lower than imported ones. It was determined by the WTO that the excise tax system discriminated against foreign manufacturers since most of the locally-produced distill spirits used alcohol that was fermented from locally-produced sugar and had a lower tax rate. The intention of this bill in proposing the two-tiered structural proposal is to protect local farmers, a lower excise tax for tobacco produced locally. This is not only a de facto discrimination exposed, but de facto discrimination ex ante." Would the distinguished gentleman recall such statement of the Department of Health?
Yes, Your Honor.
Number four, "Impact on tobacco farmers was debated at length during the sin tax deliberations and safeguards were instituted to mitigate any potential negative impact." Would the distinguished sponsor recall that statement?
May we ask our colleague to please restate the statement?
Number four reason for objecting. It says, "Impact on tobacco farmers was debated at length during the sin tax deliberations and safeguards were instituted to mitigate any potential negative impact."
Yes, Your Honor, it was mentioned.
It was mentioned. And in justification for that objection, it said, and I quote, "The impact on tobacco farmers was one of the reasons often cited as a reason not to pass the sin tax bill." Evidence at that time, however, showed that about eighty percent of tobacco produced in the Philippines were exported. In addition, In addition, local manufacturers were importing a lot of their tobacco requirements and using higher proportion of imported tobacco in their production. Furthermore, areas planted to tobacco has been declining for years, even without tobacco tax increases. Nonetheless, to address farmer concerns, the practice of allocating 15% of incremental revenues to tobacco farmers was still continued with the additional provision that some of these be used to help farmers ship to alternative crops. Would the distinguished sponsor recall such justification?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
And number five in the list of objections is this, "Protection of the farmers to best address is best addressed through expenditure policy and better implementation of the 15% earmark for tobacco-producing and the use." Will the distinguished gentleman confirm such statement of the Department of Health?
Yes, Your Honor.
And then it proceeded to say, and I quote, "It should focus its efforts on measures on how tobacco farmers can ship to alternative crops or alternative livelihoods. It should look into how incremental funds meant for tobacco farmers under Republic Act 7171 and Republic Act 8240 are being spent and utilized for the benefit of farmers. It should also consider that the annual economic cost of smoking to the country is 188 billion pesos, a figure much bigger than the total tobacco excise tax collected annually." And quote, will the distinguished sponsor confirm that this statement was reflected in the position paper of the Department of Health?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Now, what was the reason for the committee on Ways and Means in not adapting or refusing to acknowledge the verity of these objections from the Department of Health?
Your Honor, they were very much acknowledged, received, and deliberated upon during the committee hearings.
But committees invite resource persons so that they could give their inputs for or against a pending measure, is that correct?
Yes, Your Honor, we do that as prudence in understanding that wisdom comes from the private sector, the civil society organizations, as well as the executive department.
So, it is incumbent on the particular committee concerned which have invited resource persons to at least discuss in its committee report the submissions and why they are not being followed by the particular committee, is that correct?
Your Honor, the committee report reflects the action taken by the committee as approved by the members of such committee.
I don't see any discussion or the committee having synthesized the positions submitted by the resource persons. All that the committee did was to attach the bill as they have approved, but there was no discussion whatsoever on what they received as inputs from the resource persons.
Your Honor, the committee acted on the motion of one of our members to adopt the proposed bill as a representative of the committee report, Your Honor. And as there was no objection, it was unanimously approved, such was the result.
But under our rules, if I recall correctly, Section 39 of Rule Pen, the committee should submit a committee report for the discussion and approval of the members. So a committee report is indeed important so that the members of the committee would know how to vote on a particular measure. But no such committee report has been rendered by the committee on Ways and Means.
Your Honor, the interpretation of our distinguished colleague from Albay may very well be correct and accurate, but it's not reflected in my copy of the rules of the House of Representatives under Section 39.
I don't have a copy now of the rules of the House, but I am certain this is under Rule 9 and possibly under Section 39 on committee reports.
Indeed, Mr. Speaker, tama po ang ating kasamahan mula sa Albay. Rule 9, Section 39, pero ang section po ay walang piniscribe na format or formula or essential contents of a committee report. And therefore, only describes that such committee report shall be approved by the said committee.
Well, it is important that a committee report be on hand for purposes of discussion by the members of the committee so that they will be guided accordingly. As a matter of fact, the reason why a committee report should contain these salient features is found under Section 35 of Rule 9 with respect to the purpose of having a TWG go over the proposed measure. It is there you could see the reason why a committee report is important and what a committee report should do.
Your Honor, we have no objection with the statement of our distinguished colleague. The committee diligently attached fast facts, a shorter version of the minutes of the meeting, which may help guide our members into forming their own decision on this very important matter.
But the attachment of a fact sheet which is a bare summary will not be compliant with the requirement that committee report be rendered and what is the purpose why a committee report is required. But as it may, there was no committee report compliant with the rules in this particular case.
May we request the honorable gentleman to please restate the question?
No, I was not making, I didn't ask any question, I just made a commentary.
Thank you.
With respect to the need to comply with the rules of the House.
Yes, Your Honor, we fully subscribe to that statement and rest assured, the committee members, leaders, and the secretariat are doing its best to comply with all the requirements of this chamber.
Now, the ostensible purpose of House Bill 4144 is to protect the tobacco farmers. In a concrete way, how will 4144 protect the Filipino tobacco farmers?
In a very concrete way, Your Honor, ang paniniwala natin ay ang measure na ito will maintain the demand for the produce of the tobacco farmers and therefore allowing them to earn a living from the practice that they have learned for decades which has been passed on from generations to generations.
I don't see the concreteness of the measure supporting the tobacco farmers. I don't see any concrete assistance from the answer of the distinguished gentleman.
Another assistance and benefit for the farmers, Mr. Speaker, is that since this measure is, is, is proposed to raise revenues, therefore also raising the share of the tobacco communities in the excise of cigarettes and tobacco products.
That is already taken care of by the safeguard of 15% of the total incremental revenues from the sin tax, which should be earmarked for the farmers, including those, helping those who would like to ship to other agricultural products.
Tama po, but ang aming pananaw ay kung dadagdag ang revenue ng government, then therefore it also increases or dadagdag din po ang share ng tobacco farmers.
And most probably, that will also increase the share to tobacco-producing localities under 7171, is that correct?
Yes, Your Honor.
Well, I have heard several times the distinguished chairman saying that the one-tier regime would constitute a bias against value cigarettes or the lower-priced cigarettes. Is my understanding correct? You have said that several times?
Yes, Your Honor, I've mentioned that as a representation of the sentiments of our colleagues as well.
Or will the enactment of House Bill 4144 be a bias in favor of a particular cigarette manufacturer who manufactures solely value cigarettes?
Your Honor, that assertion is irresponsible in the sense that many, if not all, of the players in the premium cigarette industry also have products in the value cigarette industry. So therefore, there is no truth and this committee and this representation resents any insinuation of favoring any single or group of players in any industry. Any corporation who wants or which wants to involve themselves in the trade of tobacco is welcome and this law distinguishes, does not distinguish between any player, among any player in the industry.
Well, I really object to such labeling my statement as irresponsible. I have never been impolite or improper in my questions to the distinguished chairman. I move, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker, that that label irresponsible be taken off the record.
Majority Leader, you may respond to the motion of the distinguished head selectman.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
May we?
For the deletion of that portion.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Well, I understand that there are members of the House who are going to have their Christmas party. And I understand from the majority floor leader that we will not have a deadly Christmas because we are going to vote on the imposition of the death penalty bill next year. But in order to allow members of the House to have their Christmas party, I will suspend my interpolation and have it reset for next week.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session.
Session suspended.
I think we should establish the call room and it is correct that the majority leader said that we will have first a roll call and after the roll call, I will continue with my interpolation. I promise you that this will be shorter than I expected to do.
With that, Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 4144 to give way to the roll call, Mr. Speaker.
Session resumed.
May I restate my motion, Mr. Speaker? I move, Mr. Speaker, to suspend consideration of House Bill 4144, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The chair hearing none. Consideration of House Bill Number 4144 is suspended.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the calling of the roll of members, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives, Abad, Abaya, Abayon, Abiliyanoza, Abu, Abueg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Adbingkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alcala, Aliano, Almario, Almonte, Alontinaguyat, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio. Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensah, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Piliyano, Belmonte Jose Cristoper, Belmonte Regardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Viron, Bulilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut Pigtang, Kagas, Calderon, Kalix Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilo, Castelo, Casof Frans, Casof Redenil, Katanko, Cayetano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Ko, Kowanko, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Delipe, Dalok, Dasa, Deus, De Venesia, De Vera, De Pensor, Delmar, De Losario, De Losa Montalia, Di Mapor Abdullah, Di Maporo Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erice, Erigel, Ermita Boain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia C., Garcia Albano, Gary Richard, Gary Sharon, Gasa Taya, Gachalian, Heron, Guana Cristina, Gomark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Goreceta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Over, Alusos, Javier, Ko, Kong Hun, Labat Labat, Lakson, Legman, Lanete, Logan, Lesitin, Leachon, Lee, Limkaychong, Lubrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magodato Suarto, Magodato Sanjit, Marcoletta, Marcos, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Millana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Maleñón, Wominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Segavas, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramirizato, Ramos, Relámpagos, Rivilia, Robobuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Esidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roqueari, Roque Ruelio, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salseda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Santos Rector, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar, Sevillano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singzon, Suansing Estrelita, Suansing Rasyo, Suarez, Si Albarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Tevez, Chanco, Ting, Tino, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Turabi Nataman, Ti, Umalí, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Velasco, Velasco Caterra, Veloso, Vergara, Villapuerte, Villanueva, Villara Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Melesho, Yap Victor, Yu, Semora Markamin, Semora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we...
Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 157 members responded to the call.
With 157 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a call room. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill Number 4144.
Any objection? The Chair hearing none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the bill is that it is in the period of sponsorship in debate. I move that we recognize the Chairman, the sponsor, the Honorable Tequila Castro, the Lone District of Cremona, Mr. Speaker.
The distinguished sponsor is hereby recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Edsel Lagman for the resumption of his interpolation, Mr. Speaker.
The distinguished gentleman from Alba, Congressman Edsel Lagman, is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As I have committed to the distinguished Majority Leader, I have reduced my additional 50 questions to only five. But let me preface this resumption with a statement that I just received, a note from the Pill Tobacco Growers Association and the Philippine Aromatic Tobacco Development Association, which are potent groups of tobacco farmers across the Philippines, that they are in opposition to House Bill 4144 and they were not given the opportunity to present their sentiments and position on this issue. Let me go to my questions, my last five remaining questions, as reduced. Does the distinguished gentleman know the study entitled "The Economics of Tobacco Farming in the Philippines"?
No, Your Honor.
This was a study of the American Cancer Society and the Action for Economic Reforms. And this study confirms other studies that the income of tobacco contract farmers has remained steady. The average income per hectare is slightly increased compared to the period before the implementation of the sin tax law. May we know from the distinguished sponsor what is the annual income of tobacco farmers per hectare before and after the implementation of the sin tax law?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, the data is not available at the moment, but we will try to secure the data requested by our colleague from Alba.
But that data may come after this honorable chamber has approved this bill on second reading. We need the data now, not after its approval. But if it is not available, then be it of record that the data I'm asking for is not available. Let me go to another point. From 2012 to 2015, an average of 70% of local tobacco production was for the export of unmanufactured tobacco. I don't know whether this data is with the Committee on Ways and Means.
Yes, Your Honor, we have a copy of the same data.
And you confirm that it is true?
Your Honor, the data we have indicates that as of 2015, only 30% of the local produced tobacco are exported.
Can we be honest? Can we be furnished a copy of that kind of study, which contradicts completely all studies that 70% of the tobacco production are for export? Export of unmanufactured tobacco? Patagal tay di to if your data are not accurate.
Your Honor, I believe that the data that the gentleman from Albay refers to when he mentioned 70%, includes tobacco that are locally produced, but also includes tobacco that are raw materials that are imported. And as a result, the total exports amount to 70%.
Well, I am calling this data from "The Economics of Tobacco Farming in the Philippines", which the distinguished gentleman is not aware of. And it is 70% of local tobacco production, which is exported as unmanufactured tobacco. And the essence of this is that a unitary tax in 2017, is that a factor in the drop in local production? Now, I am sure the distinguished gentleman is aware of Republic Act 9211.
I would be happy to be enlightened by the gentleman from Albay, Mr. Speaker.
Well, it is the Tobacco Regulation Act of 2002. Is the distinguished gentleman aware of the World Health Organization Framework Convention on Tobacco Control, the FCTC, which the Philippines ratified in 2005?
Yes, Your Honor, I have encountered that...
And what is the thrust of these two pieces of documents?
Your Honor, I have no copy at this point, but I am sure the gentleman from Albay is well informed on the subject of those two documents.
Both these documents mandate that the government has to, quote, assist and encourage Filipino farmers to cultivate alternative agricultural crops to prevent economic dislocation consequent to legislation which would discourage cigarette smoking. That is why we have the 15% of total incremental revenue from the sin taxes as an assistance to tobacco producers, including their ship, to alternative agricultural products or industries. I don't know whether the Committee on Ways and Means in exercise of its oversight function has conducted any study or investigation on how these two pieces of documents are being complied with by the government? Or is there any such oversight investigation?
Your Honor, the Oversight Committee is yet to be convened and to perhaps pursue the proposal of the gentleman from Albay to conduct such study.
Let me wind up, Mr. Speaker. Distinguished Chairman, this interpolation, this abbreviated interpolation, with this statement. Class legislation is prohibited under our Constitution and jurisprudence. With more reason, individual legislation or one favoring principally a particular individual or corporate entity which produces lower-priced cigarettes, or what the distinguished chairman called as value cigarettes, should likewise be prohibited. And we should not engage ourselves in such discriminatory legislation. With that, Mr. Speaker, I end this shortened interpolation in deference to the request of the House leadership, represented by the distinguished Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to assure our distinguished colleague that there is no such violation or class legislation favoring any single corporation.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member of the House registered and intent to conduct an interpolation, I move that we close the period for sponsorship in debate.
Any objection that Chair hearing non? The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that you open the period of amendments, for amendments.
Any objection? The Chair hearing non? The motion is approved.
They are not having received any committee report. We, I move that we close the period for, I move that we proceed to individual amendments, Your Honor.
Committee amendment or committee report?
Committee reports, sir. There being no committee reports.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now close the period of amendments, there being no committee or individual amendments.
Any objection that Chair hearing non? The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we approve on second reading House Bill Number 4144 as contained in Committee Report Number 35.
Any objection that Chair hearing non? The motion is approved. Those who are in favor of House Bill Number 4144, say aye. Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 4144 is approved on second reading.
Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the change of referral of the following measures. House Bill Number 658, from the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and Higher and Technical Education to the Committee on Higher and Technical Education. House Bill Number 659, from the Committees on Basic Education and Culture and Higher and Technical Education to the Committee on Higher and Technical Education. House Bill Number 906, from the Committees on Basic Education and Culture and Higher and Technical Education to the Committee on Higher and Technical Education. House Bill Number 2886, from the Committee on Health to the Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples. House Bill Number 3101, from the Committee on Health to the Committee on Local Government. House Bill Number 2973, from the Committee on Health to the Committee on Science and Technology. House Bill Number 3334, from the Committee on Health to the Committee on Local Government. House Bill Number 245, from the Committee on Basic Education and Culture to the Committees on Higher and Technical Education and Basic Education and Culture. House Bill Number 2315, from the Committee on Basic Education and Culture to the Committees on Higher and Technical Education and Basic Education and Culture. House Bill Number 2539, from the Committee on Basic Education and Culture to the Committees on Higher and Technical Education and Basic Education and Culture. And finally, House Bill Number 3104, from the Committee on Basic Education and Culture to the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
Any objection? The Chair hearing non? The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, Your Honor, I move for additional reference of business. Mr. Speaker, may I move that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of bills and resolutions on first reading, as well as committee reports and communications. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bills and resolutions, including committee reports, to be referred to the appropriate committee for appropriate action.
Additional reference of business, committee reports, report by the Committee on Legislative Franchises, Committee Report Number 40 on House Bill 4631.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Report Number 41, report by the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization on House Joint Resolution Number 10.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Report Number 42, report by the Committee on Legislative Franchises on House Bill Number 4636.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Report Number 43, report by the Committee on Legislative Franchises on House Bill Number 4637.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, Your Honor, I move for the approval of Journal Number 52 dated December 6, 2016.
Any objection? The Chair hearing non? The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, Your Honor, I move for the adjournment of today's session to December 12, 2016 at 4:00 PM.
Any objection that Chair hearing non? The session is adjourned to resume on December 12 at 4 o'clock in the afternoon.